We all good? First of all, thank you for your patience. I started in close session and ran just a little bit late. You would all rise with me for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could remind everybody, if you would please take your cell phones and turn to the vibrant position or off if you choose. All right, let's move on to the agenda to... Thank you. The agenda to item E, adoption and approval of the agenda. Do not recall any of the questions for any changes.
So, second?
All those in favor of the agenda as is? Right, opposed? There we go. Oh, okay. Well, can you, you mind doing it over by the camera over there? Would that be okay? Thanks. And you know what, we'll spend a little bit if that's all right. Thank you. All right, so let's go right to the approval of the minutes.
Simple. Second.
Everybody's eligible soon?
Yes.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the minutes, you're on March 11.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes passed as presented. If you're good soon for a nice job in the minute. All right, so let's go right to special presentations. And we've got some visitors tonight. We've got McNair Elementary School in Valley Vista. So because, and only because, Valley Vista is my alma mater, you may go first.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. I would like to defer to McNair as they are already talking to the project.
That will be the last time I ever refer to them. The problem is Troy, you're much proud of them.
Thanks, Emily. You're welcome.
We are a collaborative collegial team.
I really appreciate that. So I am very proud. Careful, thank you. I'm very proud and pleased to introduce McNair's sixth graders, Audrey Frost and Gavin Dummel. So as fifth graders, Audrey and Gavin, we're actually going to see them.
I didn't realize you were going to be facing that.
As fifth graders, Audrey and Gavin were some of the first elementary school students in the district to use technology. And so they were very eager to put together a Google presentation to go along with it.
You can unplug it from... Just pull out that green plug.
Just pull out the green plug.
That's okay, isn't it?
Perfect. There you go.
To go along with the presentation.
Drop it.
Is that good? Oh, she pushed this. Yes, typically you have to stand right here. And let's get this up here.
Do you need light or are you okay?
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Bowman. I'm Gavin Dummel.
And I'm Audrey Frost. We are the sixth graders from McNair Elementary School of the Home of Stocking. Besides smart balance testing, there are a lot of exciting things happening at McNair School.
In kindergarten, students are studying... Students are studying what's in the sky. They have decorated part of the classroom to a point of school station.
Besides being really busy and becoming strong readers, first graders are practicing measuring by measuring themselves. They also are studying native birds and have birdhouses and bird feedings outside of their classroom.
Second grade is learning about insects and writing reports about all the creepy crawlies they've studied.
All of us near Sturbridge, which does have a great field trip to Cholero Lake Regional Park with a height of four miles and learn about all the different people in the eastern capital there. They're also studying colonial history and learning all about penumans' architecture.
If you're in fourth grade of McNair, then you'll be studying California history as well as getting excited for your overnight field trip to Gold Country coming up in less than a year.
Sixth graders are studying about colonial history, the fifty states and capitals, plant science, and are using their Chromebooks for just about everything, thanks to the P E S.
Sixth grade is busy learning about ancient civilizations. We've done art projects to learn about the different kinds of columns. We're holding a Maquis Symposium, doing mythological improv, and have made masks to represent different mythological characters.
All of the community fourth graders are doing classes in our school garden that are led by parent volunteers.
Fifth and sixth graders are getting in shape for the West Side Rhydlers. Our primary grade performing arts debut is coming up this weekend.
The upper grades do a spectacular job on their fall performance of Smash Up.
A team of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders are meeting every Wednesday morning to prepare for the Science Olympian coming up.
Our student yearbook committee is busy working on our 2014 yearbook. As always, there's a lot of visual arts in McNair.
Miss Priest told us that McNair does more art lesson lessons than any other schooling.
We could go on and on about all the great things that are going on in our school, but we will let you down with your meeting. Thank you for inviting us here today.
Thank you very much. Very nicely done, thank you. Yeah, we're speaking about Valley Vista now.
Point, point order.
Are we there for ten? Are you there?
Yes, we'll need a little. So, board members, I'd like to introduce to you Olivia Wagner and Megan Popiloff, two of our sixth graders who will be representing us. And I would like to thank both Patty Lotibus and Jen Ortlinghouse, who worked with the girls and other students to put this presentation together. Juror number seven was just released this afternoon after seven days of jury duty. Sure, back to work. And I'm so pleased with what they've put together to show you about our school this year.
You have a last part?
No, I'm gonna go to this.
While we're setting up the technology, if there's anybody else who would like to make comment by the public comment or during the board meeting on an agenda item, you need to make sure that you fill one of these things out. They're in the back of the room. Can you put suit right over here in the corner, please?
See, girl looks a little like the line lights. You know when you said flash dry?
Can you give you some water out here? It's all the feeling.
Hey, here we go. We're getting there.
You're used to the sun for us here adult like day.
We use that flash.
Are we ready? Especially we are. All right, Vikings, here you go.
Hi, we're sixth graders from Valley Vista Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Olivia. I was one of the students chosen from Valley Vista to be interviewed by K P I X for our cool school because our school's chosen as the cool school this year for our library. And we'll say more on that later. But I'm also part of the cross-age buddies. I am part of one of the classes that do that. And I have two buddies that are in fourth graders. And we don't just read to them. We do games, activities, worksheets. It's actually been fun. But, and I'm a bookworm, so my favorite part of Valley Vista is probably the library. And we do really, in my personal opinion, have the best library in the world.
Hi, I'm Megan. I am the vice president of Student Council. And I get to go to the meetings and I get to decide on school spirit days. Our school also does this thing called playground mentors where you go, upper graders go to the primary playground and get to act as a yard duty and help the little kids. Like my friend Olivia, also I love going to the library. It's really fun. I enjoy reading the book, The Sister's Scrum. And for Student Council, I also enjoy announcing birthdays and birthdays in the assembly on Monday morning. For our second graders did a play called City Mouse, Country Mouse, which is really cool and funny. Like I said before, we'll do more of this. But Mrs. Hoppus is our librarian and she's amazing. And our school is chosen for the cool school. And when I was interviewed, and my friend was, and some fourth and fifth graders were too, they mainly asked us what we liked the best about the library, Mrs. Hoppus, and our principal, Ms. Kineholz. The best of, well, for each day. Now, this year, we always have a theme each year. A few years ago it was bugs, now then candy, then rodeo. And now it's, we have passports. So once we read four hours of each genre, then we can say, oh, we've been to that continent. And she has pictures and posters and stuff from all around the world. And that's really amazing. And now, all the sixth graders are doing our country reports. And she has books on almost like every country, which is awesome. And she's helped us find those books. And there are, should have been, hopefully. Okay, so our school received an impact grant from the Federal Education Foundation. Thank you for that. We got a ton of money for the Chromebooks, which was really awesome because they really help the little ones. Okay, our principal, Ms. Kineholz's mother, Dora La, was helping some students in art projects. And the bilingual teacher was, Mrs. Kineholz was helping the class too. Every Monday at the assembly, we have a new word of the week. It can be easy words, be really hard words. It may have something to do with that going on that week. But it helps us learn more words, especially for the younger kids. And every week, it's, we say it to make sure we're saying it right. Then we get a definition, we hear it in a sentence, and then we say it again just to make sure that we got it and we remember it. It is possible that later in the week, some, one of the students will take advantage and be able to use that word in the classroom. And then the teacher notices and says, oh, hey, good job. That's wonderful. Our council mentor, Rose Pendleton, every Wednesday, she introduces a new tool from the tool, sorry, toolbox. There's please and thank you tool, garbage can, apology and forgiveness. And they have, and they're each represented by a certain tool in the toolbox. Like I think apology and forgiveness was a bottle of glue and a lock. I thought it was please and thank you, sorry. But, and like it says, it gives us examples and tricks to remember how to use them. And we always, and she's trying to help us remember that if a small little annoyance is making us slightly mad, then just throw it in the garbage can and let it pass. Okay, so we just had a science fair. And there were more than seventy projects presented and one hundred and fifty participants. It was really fun. And it was put on by the fifth grade teacher, Scott Granger. By the way, he's awesome. There was nearly double the, from last year, of the number of participants. And there were a lot of things that I didn't know, which was really cool to learn about. Also, from dennischoose.org, I think, or dot com, he raised enough money to get his own little weather station for our school. And it has the temperature, the wind, the humidity. And he has made, you can see a little picture on it, he has made a website. So if you want to check the weather before, at school, before, in the morning, then you can do that or after school. And it'll show what's happening at school. And it's actually, and you can see it from a classroom. You can just look out the window and it's in the front row. For, so our parents went to a fundraiser called the Viking Voyage, who raised lots of money. Looking, we're looking forward to using them to support learning for the parents. Probably adding some more Chromebooks to use in the classrooms. Also, technically, at the Viking Voyage, the grownups and the parents go eat and dance, and somehow our school gets money. It's a good party because we get money for our school. Okay, so there's a parent-teacher association where the, they raised money to get a projector for the assembly. So we don't have to use like... We had this big cart in the middle. It was, it was a little fee, but now it's plenty for the room. Also, we got, I hate, lots and lots of Chromebooks. And they also raised money to buy carts for our Chromebooks, which was really nice. So they weren't like knocked over or broken or anything. And also, they have also set up something for the parents where the band, I think, Wonder Red Five, is going to be at the La Guina's Brewery downtown, sort of.
Oh, we all know that. What time and where do you get tickets?
You can buy them in the Valley Vista office, Jerry.
And what time does the event start?
I believe five o'clock, but the band won't start that early.
Wonderful.
Okay. So, at the, at Valley Vista, there was the Head of the Bar High School librarian, Connie Williams, came to visit us and talk about the internet safety. Yeah. Also, the school has, I don't know how long this has been around, but they have our own Wi-Fi that's safe and protected. So there's no, if we search something, nothing bad or inappropriate will come up. And it'll look over at what we want. Mentioned many times before, our school has many Chromebooks spread throughout the whole school. I know my class is a lot, and it's fun, and they're cool, and get to carry them around. They're, they're just cool. But also, the Google education app, it's like this Google Drive. You can create documents for like reports or anything like that. And you can also do it just for fun. Like if you want to relax and make a cool thing of pictures, you can go on Drawings and you can just put text box and create some text and break colors and just have fun. Also, was it sixth grade or whole school? I don't know. I know the sixth grade, we did coding. Yeah, and it's like where you, we learned that like when you type the phrase and then numbers, you can get shapes on the computer, which is really cool. It's like, whoa. Some upcoming events for our school is the Philharmonic. They're performing at AT&amp;T Park this Friday. And she is performing, actually. It's my third year. And it's just, it's not just for Valley Vista. I know it's in other elementary schools too. And I've done it before, and it's really, really awesome. And we did it last year. It's really amazing. I mean, you get to play the National Anthem on the Giants Field. Yay. The Latino Dinner is coming up, April twenty fifth. That should be really fun. I've gone. It's amazing. Amazing entertainment, amazing food. And my friend, she's Latino, so she knows how to judge this stuff. And she says it's good. The sixth graders are going to the after-education, the cheerleading this year. It's for two nights and three days, I think, or two days. But I've heard that, I know, we've been there before. We know there's a swimming pool, but apparently we get to go rock climbing and zip lining. That'd be awesome. Plus, the sixth graders, we have a lot of field trips this year.
I'm sorry about this. Going right down.
Also, the sixth graders, they have a lot of field trips this month. We did go and watch the San Francisco Symphony at baby's hall down in San... But they're gonna have, someone, this one day came and talked to us and told us what it would be like, proper etiquette, what kind of music we were gonna hear. And who the conductor was and what they did. We heard, we listened to a little bit of music, but...
And it's really music.
Yeah, and apparently they're doing a special thing where it'll be more for kids and slightly babies, I think. We are also going on a field trip to AT&amp;T Park, like a map field trip, which I've heard that it's gonna be John Stewart Hall. At the open house this year at Vista, we're going to do a sixth grade barbecue. And the people who buy the food, they will get, they will get good food and our school will get money. Our school. Also, this year, some of the sixth grader, not some of the sixth graders, all the sixth graders went to see a performance, a monologue of Warrior Stone Cry at the Wells Fargo Center for the Arts. It was really, really amazing. She did a fantastic job of being able to do all the characters as one person. Also... We went to the Palace of Legion of Honor in San Francisco. We went there to learn about ancient art. But we also got, we learned a lot about that. But we also got to explore the top level. There were a whole bunch of like Greek and stuff. Also, the sixth graders are learning partner dances. We've done, we've performed, half of the group has done, did one quite a few weeks ago at the assembly. And was it this week or not? This week, the other group did another different dance at the assembly. And since there's more guys and girls in sixth grade, we're gonna have to do another one. So all of the guys have their chance. So that'll be, we'll start learning that, also mentioned before. The sixth graders participated in Hour of Code, which, on code.org, which is technically one hour, and you can learn coding really easily. And there's levels, and you move up levels, and it gets really, really hard. And now I'm stuck. But I will try to work through it. And this is the part, this is the part. I was really shy at June high. The social scene was pretty scary for me. Some of the student achievements was, we got eleven Chromebooks through donations and grants. We raised enough money to get thirty-three copies of The City of Ember. My class has read it all, and it's a really good story. And I read it a while ago, and it is amazing. Our class is gonna read it, and I've kind of forgotten it. So that's good, but we, it's not like, well, okay, let me say that. Again, we got the money for this, the book, the books from the dennischoose website, which has helped our classroom a lot. Getting Chromebooks to books to Ms. Gregor's weather station is amazing. And I am hoping that we get to, if not as a class, just rereading the second and third and fourth book because I really liked the first one. Also, all the sixth graders, they chose a book that they were either halfway through or done with at that time. And we reviewed the books and we got them put up in coffee fields right by the kids section with the book next to it. And they had a picture, and then we had a little short part. And what we liked the best, and it was really fun. And some of us will get the chance to do it again, I think. You can see that over here, that was, we were doing coding during the holidays, so... Well, my class, everyone made Christmas cards using the coding. It sometimes was very frustrating when the snowman ended up here and here and here, when it was simple to feel nice and light up. And then here... And then here, um, this is the Copperfields Bookstore dinners. Um, Copperfields has this thing where kids can sign up and they will get alerted when author, an author like Adam Kidd, that's actually once in his, it was really funny and fun. Um, they will get to know when the author's coming and then every, all the kids who wanna come, plus the author, will go to, we'll cook pizza downtown, which is amazing. And we will get to have dinner with him and we will talk and he will talk and we will ask questions and we can either buy the book if we don't have it or, and, or, and, and he will, um, sign the book for you with a little thing, saying, oh, especially this one, I really hope this book doesn't scare you too bad. It, it was amazing. But, um, also the Chromebooks are really fun because we get to work outside, so if it's too loud and noisy in the classroom, we can just go outside and work out there in fresh air. It's actually really nice.
Um, thank you, thank you for, for your time and letting us come and talk and. Thank you.
So ladies made reference to the KPIX video, um, it'll take some doing this, so I'd rather just send it and, and share it with the board members that way, so you can take a look at the, the video clip.
Very good, thank you. So the four of you that just presented. Hang on for just a second.
Just all of them.
Four that presented.
The two values of children.
Hey, so I just wanna share this with you. Uh, supplement one. You probably always hear this, but public speaking is like, you guys did a really good job. And you probably heard this study that says, you know what the number two fear of everybody in the United States is? Do you know what it is? Yeah, yeah, public speaking is number one. So I just wanna share with you, you did a really nice job. And we're gonna see the junior high kids come up here next. And the student representatives, they're gonna give us a little presentation, since you're all sixth graders, you're there about track. I hope that maybe in a year or two, we see one of the four or all of them up here doing the same. All right, so thank you very much for your work. If you have a matter, uh, Jayden will, we're gonna have the two junior high schools come up and give their, uh, quick, uh, updates on what's going on at the spirit facility, we're gonna take a quick break because some of you will probably need some homework or some other things like that. So if you just, uh, hang with us a second, we'll do a quick break for anybody that needs to sneak out. But I will tell, tell you right now, we prefer that you stay because there's some important stuff going on after this, so. If I could have Kenowh.
Good evening, I'm Adeline.
And I'm Donovan, the ASU president, and this is the update for Kenowh's junior high. Kenowh's very own Colts have been busy on many spirit days, activities and much more. For the sport finale, federal school, the wrestling team has had an amazing season while track is in the middle of their, their running season. The runners swept away many of the ribbons on the first lead for relays and field events on March twenty seventh. Our amazingly hardworking band is going to be playing not only in the Butter and Eggs Day Parade on April twenty sixth, but also at the Giants game on April eleventh. As we give up for the end of the year, the annual eighth grade panoramic photo will be taken. The last dance for both grades before the eighth grade promotion dance, we have our back to the beach themed dance on April twenty fifth. There will be snow cones, great music and a lot of fun in store for all participants. Leadership will be hosting a throwback week on May for themes such as the sixties, eighties and a classic greasers day. Kenowh junior high students have prepared a cult shuffle with moves that every student can learn to show off their school spirit anytime. Despite all the preparation for the end of the school year, we are starting a smaller balance test for both eighth and seventh grade students in math, English and science classes. Hard work is still being done in all classes, especially in science and English. All English students in eighth grade are creating their own magazine based on things they love. Eighth grade science students are flying past their strong unit and soon to work on their bomber rockets. This is just some of the few things that Kenowh has planned for the month of April twenty fourteen.
Thanks. Any demonstration on the, uh, shuffle?
Hard copy to the right of children. I think the principal would like to show.
Maybe next time.
He came up with it, so. Really slumbers of us.
It's, it's pretty much just the carolton, but adding the shuffle.
Oh.
Am I really?
Yes. I think it told a whole group of people who had no clue what the carolton was.
So like, it starts off with like a full count of you, of going like, like this, you know? And then it goes into, um, the actual shuffle part, which is full and then it does like, what, um, which it was big like a year or two ago, but called the Bernie. And then it goes into like the actual carolton, which is like. Yeah, it was the dance from the Fresh Prince of Bel Air. And then, and after that, it's like, we do a little spin thing and then another part of the carolton where it's like, yeah, like that. It's, it's, it's gonna be really cool, especially when we have the whole school together during it and, and to the music.
Okay, well, is there a chance we'll see this at promotion?
You never know.
Probably, I mean, with us, you never know.
On this, your class loves to dance. So it would surprise me if that happened.
All right, well, thank you very much, nicely done. If you could get a couple of junior high up here, please. I'm gonna caution you against admitting any dance moves or. You may have enough course. So next one?
My name is Kayle Pearson. Uh, yeah. Spring has definitely sprung and there's a lot going on at PJHS. Monday, April seventh marks the day, the first day of the C A A S T P testing. All students will be testing their English and math classes over the next five weeks. All of us have had time to take the practice test, we did for each, each exam and most of us openly talked about how different the test was from the task assessments. We have been challenged and encouraged by our teachers and principals to do, to do our best. Last week, the seventh grade science teachers began taking their students to the California Academy of Sciences Museum. Over two hundred students have gone so far, with the rest scheduled to go by the end of the school year. While at the museum, students were given a scout scavenger hunt of terms that they had learned throughout the year. Examples, variation, overproduction, evolution and DNA, that they were tasked with finding an example of and then taking a picture of it for the next class. When students returned to class, they uploaded all photos on a Google Drive document and wrote captions that discussed how their picture was an example of the term. The students looked at all the different photos for each word and talked about what pictures were the best examples. Also last week, our seventh and eighth grade leadership class was invited to attend We Day. We Day is a nat, is a national event honoring and sharing the stories of inspirational people who have made a difference in their communities locally, regionally and internationally. Our leadership group joined sixteen thousand students and staff from middle schools, middle schools and high schools across California, across California and at Oracle Arena. Seeing here a presentation from Mart, Martin Sheen, Spencer West, Jeff Skoll, participant media, Seth Grossman, Orlando Bloom, Flina Gomez and Magic Johnson. This Friday, April eleventh, the band chorus will travel to AT&T Park to perform the National Anthem before the Giants game. Everyone is excited to head down for the performance and then stay for the game. In sports news, our wrestling team finished well, only losing two matches this year. The final league tournament was hosted at PJHS on March fifteenth. The PJHS team took third out of nine teams. With over a hundred and thirty members, our track team continues to train hard and compete as well, well as they have won all their meets but once since the start of the season. All students are doing well, with many bringing home two or more ribbons for their performances and several have tied or broken school records already. Some PJ, PJHS students are working on two Casa Grande seniors, are working with two Casa Grande seniors on a mural for our school. The idea for the mural came from the Casa students as part of their senior project. One of their goals is to bring more art onto school campuses and collaborate with younger students to foster love for art, of art and creating art. The students working on the mural have been meeting at lunch and after school on Tuesdays and Thursdays since returning from the break. When completed, the mural, the mural will hang in the multipurpose room at PJHS. Last but certainly certainly not least, the grading period ends next Wednesday and students are working hard to maintain and pull up grades as we move toward promotion. Thank you for your attention.
All right, again, we have important stuff that we're gonna talk about after this, but we recognize that some folks have homework for dinner or something important to go to, so we're gonna take about a two-minute break. And if you could make your way out and if you could do me a favor too, and not, if you do decide to hang, don't stare outside the door because we can hear you. Two minutes. Are we warm? Is that why we have the door open? Come on in. We have, we have one more comment card, do I have to come in? No hoarding of the comments card, if you have a comment card, I need it up here. Oh, it's coming up now? It's a backup comment card?
If he, okay, and I need you to take that off of this. You don't put that, you put it on the table, put it on or what? Sir, it's, it's actually nice to.
You do, no, 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 we're not doing this.
May I use projector?
No, you can put that right there.
I don't have the right to use projector, sir?
You can put that right there.
Why is it that this cannot stay here, sir?
Because this is the board dice up here, you can put that up there.
So can I move this table? Would that be all right for you?
Do you wanna put it on the table?
I would like to put it right here, is that all right?
As long as it's not on, that should be.
Okay, cool, let me do that.
Now the next, hey, you know, I'm gonna hit one public comment first, but I need to know what that.
This is a demonstration for this evening.
No, no, what is that?
It is a demonstration for this evening, we're gonna get to it, sir.
Well, you're not gonna get to it, tell me what it is, or you're not gonna use it.
It has a wifi router in it, sir. It's for us to actually measure a wifi router radiation that you're actually, as a, a demonstration of what goes on in our schools. That's what it is. It is about the same specs of the wifi routers that you're putting into our schools right now. It's so that we can realize what we are actually doing in our schools.
You're not using it.
I think I am, sir.
Uh, do you know?
Okay.
So you can unplug it and put it wherever it needs to be.
You, uh, I have every right to use audio visual aids. You have no rights to take any audio visual aids away and we'll use whatever we need, sir.
Thank you.
This is unplugged and I will decide whether I use it, at this point, I reserve the right.
Uh, well, you're not using it, so.
All right, that's great, I hear you.
So what's gonna go with?
Please sit down.
We're gonna start with Connie Williams. For those of you that haven't been here before though, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna read the piece of this card that I hope maybe you already read, uh, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about it. Okay, if you could turn that off, that'd be great. One second, Connie, while I read this, I know that you've been here before. But let me just read this real quick for everybody, I don't like to have to read this, but I think so, I'm gonna have to read it. Under Governor Code, section five four nine five four three, A. Members of the public have the right to address the government board on any items or ventures providing relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school, in other words, you can talk here about things that we control. Uh, and according to Board Policy D two nine three two three, speakers allocated a total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, reporting of services and/or employees, the district does not have a current policy, does have a current policy, E P A R one three one two one, specific complaints against employees. Should comments come from the public pertaining to a specific district employee, Board request that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's media supervisor for investigation. Board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The Board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, we listen carefully and we do appreciate the value input from the public. And really, the, um, Reader's Digest version of this is, Brian says that we can only talk about stuff and make decisions on things that have been agendaed. So under public comment, if it's not an agendaed item, we'd like to hear you, uh, talk with us. We're not gonna have a dialogue about it because it's not an agendaed item and we do actually value the input. Again, this is a, this is not a public meeting, this is a meeting of the school board that's held in public. We have an agenda, we have, um, policy, the government's how we do stuff, so I wanna make sure everybody's clear. And with that, I appreciate your time. Connie, please come on up.
Hi.
I'm sorry, do I have any other public comments? I have no more public comments.
Now, Juan, if we need any, there's a backup right here. Over.
Hi, I'm Connie Williams and with me is Nathan Langkapp, teacher librarian at Casa, and Kate Keaton, librarian at Pedaluma Public Library. Uh, the American Library Association President Barbara Stripling has created a grassroots initiative called Libraries Change Lives. It's a declaration for the right to libraries campaign. More than just a petition, this declaration is just that. It's a declaration that we, the signers, announce that all of us need access to the world's information and the instruction in how to gain access to it. We're here to let you know about that declaration. We have copies of it about in our community, that public library has a copy of it. Currently, Copperfields has a copy of it and we will be having it at, going it around to some of the school libraries, the secondary school libraries. Um, so currently it's at Copperfields in the public library. And last night, Kate and I were at the city council meeting where David Glass and the city council issued a proclamation in support of our Pedaluma libraries. But we're mostly here to tell you about, uh, our Pedaluma school libraries. We've joined forces with the Pedaluma Public Library and have invited all Pedaluma libraries from elementary to the J C to join us in saying thank you to the citizens of Pedaluma for support of their libraries by walking together in the Butter and Eggs Day Parade. Uh, and celebrating our homegrown libraries. We invite you to join us as we march to say thank you to celebrate that strong school libraries build strong students and partnering with our public libraries builds strong communities, providing the resources necessary to enrich lives and create lifelong learners. So we invite you to, um, share in the declaration signing at some point, hopefully, uh, in one of the schools or, um, at the public library and to join us in the parade. It's going to be a lot of fun, over thirty schools, all, all the city schools have been invited and we invite you to join us.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Tell me when you're ready. You have Susan Clark, Laura Klein, Heather Mills, and then yourself, is that the order that you read?
That's correct, yes, okay.
So five minutes apiece.
All right.
And we'll start. I have about a time for a fifth speaker.
Great, I have an introduction for Susan Clark. Susan Clark was ten years a research assistant for the Harvard School of Public Health.
Let Susan Clark come in and tell us then. How's Susan Clark come in and tell us something?
She wanted to be in shoes, sorry, Bill.
Okay.
From which she.
Stop. I'm not going to have you rude like that.
All right, Susan, go ahead. Get your shot.
Susan Clark, come up here.
Thank you for your welcome. I will present here solely established scientific facts and here's some fine print for attorneys and so on. My ability shall assist for any mischaracterization of my remarks as a matter of concern or as anything less than substantive. Now, in public health science, we consider two aspects of bioeffects magnitude. First, the agent, in this case RF radiation, microwave radiation, and secondly, the recipients are exposed organisms, in this case occupants of Wi-Fi schools. Many factors contribute to the magnitude of RF microwave radiation bioeffects. Here, I discuss only direct bioeffects, not secondary effects or heating. Duration, for example, may influence bioeffects more powerfully than exposure intensity. Modulation, wavelength, and the complexity of the radiation microenvironment also have very potent influence in intensifying bioeffects. For exposed humans in schools, we consider not just vulnerability or susceptibility, as you'd expect, but also levels of consensuality in the exposure situation. Whether exposure to a harmful agent is voluntary, semi-voluntary, or coerced will influence the resulting bioeffects, with coercive circumstances producing more harm. In the massive RF bioeffects literature, inclusive of well over 20,000 studies from the 1920s to the present, duration pops out as a most important parameter, even where exposure intensities are millions of times lower than FCC guidelines. Where a duration is constant and continues over years, harmful effects are concluded. By contrast to cellphone usage, which may be intermittent and generally does not occur overnight, Wi-Fi irradiates constantly through the school day and often by night at home. Such chronic exposures then multiplied by many days and years, producing with certainty harmful effects. Chronic exposure is consistent in showing adverse effects in the scientific literature which I have analyzed quantitatively. With wavelengths including, that include that of the microwave element, about five inches, this wavelength was chosen to maximize efficiency of cooking by way of maximized radiation absorption. Additional wavelengths near two and three inches are also present in Petaluma schools Wi-Fi. These wavelengths maximize radiation absorption in body parts with dimensions of about one to 10 inches. Here's why. As a wavelength approaches a body part size, the absorption in that body part increases exponentially toward resonance, where the body part literally acts as an antenna. Water content in human, animal, and plant bodies makes all living organisms quite literal sponges for a seven-meter or inch-sized radiation. Modulation involves the manipulation of a wave, in this case it's chopping up, if you will, into short bursts or pulses of radiation. Everyone's familiar with FM and A and regular. FM meaning frequency modulation, A and mean amplitude modulation, where information is coded on a wave by way of higher or lower intensities. Pulse modulation used for Wi-Fi is a form of amplitude modulation but more harmful because it alternates between intensity and zero amplitude, resulting in more intense radiation spikes that interfere with brain cardiac cellular function. As an aside, pulse modulation has been used for decades by militaries for torture. Pulse modulation is extremely zoono-biotic or foreign to life. An RF researcher from Washington State University goes so far as to say that pulse-modulated radiation exists nowhere else in the universe. I don't know that I'd agree quite with that, but that's what he says. Where the microenvironment involves radiation sources in addition to Wi-Fi, such as tablets, cellphones, and towers, the radiation interaction is extremely complex. In this case, bioeffects are not merely additive, but rather multiplicative and exponential. Moreover, other types of exposures such as heavy metals, maintenance, and cosmetic chemicals, even from a person's past, will synergize with RF radiation to increase the hazard. The most vulnerable populations are the young, old, ill, and impaired. The most susceptible individuals are those with pre-existing conditions of family inheritance or genetic predisposition, illness, or impairment, prior exposures to electromagnetic radiation and toxic chemicals, and electronic medical device usage. Let me qualify then that these terms do not merely infer increased risk, but rather actual harm, above and beyond that of the general public. Harm from RF occurs in all persons by some detriment. For example, every person experiences melatonin suppression from RF radiation. But vulnerable, susceptible people incur greater and different damages than others do. In public health science, we note a phenomenon called the healthy worker effect. Workers who do not perceive immediate harm from a hazardous agent with which they work continue to stay at the job, while others who have more immediate or short-term symptoms tend to leave or end up terminated. Similarly, the healthy user effect applies to cellphone users, who continue to use even after they learn about harmful forms because they do not experience immediate symptoms. This effect brings an illusion of safety. Those persons who initially seem more susceptible and who have a choice to remove themselves from a hazardous situations end up healthier in the long run. Where people are forced occupationally or in school to be exposed to hazard, there's little to do except leave the situation. Limbic hindling is a neurologic condition where either by electromagnetic radiation or chemical exposure, the brainwave acquires unnatural spikes that lead toward seizures or seizure-like symptoms, attention deficit, and other cognitive impairments. Those who have some limbic hindling will experience more immediate symptoms from RF radiation. Where many are all paranoid or set as so as to maximize harm from radiation, weapons-grade radiation results. In the case of school Wi-Fi, there's not only significant exposure to tans, it has called it as, and analysis shot, but also maximized.
I'm taking your volume down. Thank you. Susan, thank you. Okay, so what you left on is weapons-grade radiation deployed at schools. That's what the. Stop. That's the truth. When I talk to you and tell you to talk, and it's okay for you to talk, is when you may talk. You may not talk until I tell you that. Can I be any more clear than that?
You're very clear, sir.
Thank you. Okay, now, two things. First of all, is Lauren Clyde physically here?
Yes.
Heather Mills? And of course, I see you, Mr. McGee. The second thing, it is the policy of this board that you must physically be at public comment unless certain accommodations are made. Had I known that Susan Clark was not physically here, I would not have let you do that because you started, and for no real good reason I can understand of myself, I let you finish. We won't do that again.
It's our right to use audiovisual.
Number two, what did I already just tell you?
Just telling you the voters what our rights are as well. We have rights too.
I'm not going to tell you again. You're disruptive to this meeting. I'm not going to tell you again. So can I have Lauren Clyde, please, come up and speak next? Would you like the podium? It's up to you.
Will it be, well, it's not necessary. I just have a brief comment. My name's Lauren Clyde. I have a child in the school district. My background's in environmental studies, and I have serious concerns about exposures to students, microwave radiation in the schools. I've done some studying on my own, and we turn off the Wi-Fi in our house. And that said, our medical doctors request, we have a couple of medical doctors that we work with who would prefer that it's off at our house, and it's really concerns that you've heard and you're going to hear more about. So I just wanted to let you know that that is my concerns.
And you're ceding the rest of your time to the video to support your position?
That's exactly right. Yes, it's a video that I understand is going to be played. That's why I'm going to.
She's allowed to play video to support her president.
Not.
Not, sir. We're allowed to do this. She has five minutes to do this, sir. She's allowed to use five minutes to present a video. We are presenting this video. It's allowed.
All right, so I'm going to conclude from our temporary disruption. My apologies to the mayor, maybe. We still have public comment available, some time available under this subject and some other subjects. And so I'm going to see, see Lauren Clyde, I believe already spoke. Is Heather Mills still here? Would Heather Mills still like to speak?
Heather Mills, I think, is playing video.
No, Heather Mills, she was the younger, just got the short blonde hair.
I can't pronounce this. Is it E or X or E?
I think it's that gentleman in the Giants hat.
Okay, all right, we got that one. I have a Jason that looks like Barry.
That'll be me.
And I'm sorry, it says a real-world view, and that would be in a relationship to what specific topic?
I want to just comment a little bit on the topic that was discussed there, in a slightly different way.
That's fine.
That's okay.
You have five minutes?
Yeah.
What was your name? My name is Jason Berry, B-R-Y. A little bit of background so you know who I am. I'm a parent. I have two kids in actually in Pangrove School. I'm an electronic and computer systems engineer. I've been working in the audiovisual industry now for, oh, in this country, about 14 years. And I have had concerns over this type of technology for some time. That's all I wanted to say. What I want to make sure it happens in this meeting is that everybody tries to get a sort of general picture of what's happening. I do understand some of the intricacies behind the technology and what it can do to the biomechanics of your body and everything else. I'm not a doctor. I'm not going to speak on that. But I am actually a cancer sufferer as well, just so everybody's aware. This is something that really does affect me, my family, and everybody close to me. So I make a living designing technology systems for schools, universities. I work for a company, my CEO is at Petaluma. We're a very tight-knit company. And the challenges I see putting technologies into classrooms, classroom environments, public buildings, any environment, involve many different factors. And I think a lot of the problems that are being talked about here could be addressed with a modicum of common sense. You know, wireless technologies are not going to go away overnight. We cannot eradicate wireless technologies from our living spaces. But what we can do is engineer those technologies and configure them in such a way that they are, they have less of an impact. Okay, so I can put a wireless access point on the ceiling in here, and I can get it out of the box and plug it in without a big arrangement that the guy had here. I don't know what that was all about. But if I take it out of the box and just throw it up there on the ceiling and just walk away, it's going to be in a default mode, yeah? And that default mode is often going to be very, what they call hot, right? When you're dealing with radio frequency, you talk about temperature because the object generates heat. And it's just in RF engineering, that's how they talk about it. It's a really hot signal. It means it's a very intense signal. So if I get this access point and put it on the ceiling and turn it on, and it's got this really hot signal and it's on all day long, and nobody's using it, maybe you are, maybe you've got a laptop, maybe the teacher has a laptop, maybe not. Maybe you have tablets in the classroom, the kids need to connect to the wireless access point with tablets. You'll have different results with communication based on the intensity of that signal. So there are a whole qualified group of people that come in and configure these devices in these environments, okay? So it's a good idea to plan ahead and design your system so that you have the flexibility to adjust the level of the signal to the optimum performance in the room. You don't want, and he's absolutely right, I mean, and I've personally experienced this over and over and over again. I walk into schools all the time, and universities, and private homes, where they've just got the game, what they call the game adjustment. It's like the heat adjustment on this antenna. It's just a radio signal. They've got it cranked all the way up, okay? It's a bit like driving your car every day at super-high speed in second gear. Yeah, it's really not going to do the engine much good, and it's really not going to do you much good either. It is going to cost you a lot of money, although obviously the cost here is health benefits in some cases. Do I have a time limit on how long I can talk?
You've got about another minute now.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, well, I could obviously go on a little bit, but.
I always come back to.
I want to say that I see these poorly deployed systems all over the place. I see overly engineered systems. It's the same with HVAC. You know, people always put three times too much HVAC in the room just because they can. You know, it benefits a lot of contractors on the back end. I will say that. I think that a lot of what you see here could be addressed through more thoughtful design and more collaboration early on in the project lifecycle. I won't spend any more time trying to scare people, but I'm here because, as I said, this is my, this is my job, and I'm genuinely concerned about deploying electronic technologies in spaces with children, mainly because your bone density as a child is significantly less than when you're an adult. If I take a cellphone, it's not a cellphone, and I place it on the side of my head as an adult, the radio signal from that cellphone is going to penetrate, you know, so far. It's not actually going to do so much damage to my brain. And you can look this up on the web. You know, it's free information. If you do that to a child, that radio signal reaches right the way across the other side of their head. Again, there's things you can do to counter that. You don't have to put the cellphone next to your head to use it, but, you know, children are much more susceptible to these types of problems. And I just want to leave it at that. I hope this discussion continues. I hope that you guys all find somebody to help. You need a consultant. You need a radio frequency consultant. You need a network engineer and some specialists to help you balance the equation here. That's really it.
Thank you for a thoughtful commentary.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Do I have any other public comment cards on other subjects? There's about five minutes left on this subject. If anybody would like to speak here. If not, we'll move to the regular meeting, the rest of the meeting, I should say. So Item I is the report on activities of correspondence of school board members. We've got the, and I'll ask you guys to chime in on some of these. WASC Dinner and Reception. KTV, which is the Kinnaworth Television at Kinnaworth High School. Good Morning Kinnaworth Program.
Waiting for your turn.
Can I say something about that? It's awesome.
It was so much fun.
We had such a good time, and everybody involved was just so pro. And this little eighth-grade boy was like the master coordinator, director, producer. And Laura Bradley, the English teacher, over there scripted, but they couldn't have made it more easy on us. But it was more important. It's more technology and another skill set that these kids are being introduced to, so Kinnaworth to be applauded. I mean, it was, it was slick.
Yeah, I got to do it too, and it was a lot of fun.
All three of you did it?
And Phoebe's on our calendar, Troy.
My people will talk to your people. Troy wants royalties.
And Ron wants I don't.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid. Yeah, but Ron said, "Good morning, Vietnam." He messed up a little bit. We've got some varsity softball games, the CASA, Pullman High School lacrosse game. Who was at that?
I was.
And how did that go? That was a little Casey?
It was, yeah, and it was my first lacrosse game, and, you know, they were juniors in high school and so big boys, and it was lots of pretty intense sport. It was pretty cool. A lot of skill. I mean, I guess I should have assumed, but a lot of skill and a lot of love. It was fun. It was exciting.
Good. Sco trusty meeting on call four.
Yeah, yeah, I went. And all the parts.
Very good. And what about the WASC Dinner?
We've lost, we had a nice reception at the Petaluma Laboratory, and then we took the WASC committee members to a nice dinner, a bowl, a little piece of Petaluma. It was very nice, and they seemed to really appreciate it. And all of our people that were there from our district, I felt were wonderful. They just answered all the questions, and really, it was a nice interaction. It was a really, really nice event.
Great. Very good. Any other activities? We'll move on to the consent agenda, and since we did not have any changes to the agenda as it was written, I will take a motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So the agenda goes five oh. Okay, so let's go to Administration and Human Resources. Item two, Resolution 131423. Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma, State of California, reducing classified hours.
Second.
And I would like to hear from Lauren.
Good evening. Try to be a little less in the paint. So this first one is, there are two partial reductions. It was, they were increased this year through a MOU memorandum. There were some, you know, funds were available, and the school found, and both these, actually, the special ed department found that there was, there was a need to increase the hours of a couple of employees for the year. And so those have been cut back until next year and making decisions on what is needed. You know, sort of annually, there's the covering what needs to be done, and then as, as the needs arise, adding to that with, through a mental understanding that if willing, at the end of the year, so these employees were aware of that. Point it.
So it depends on student population?
Right, right, the needs.
Needs, yeah.
Somebody's going to stay up here.
Yeah, exactly. Any discussion on that particular resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's five oh two. Item three, Resolution 131424. Board of Education, Sonoma State School, Elementary School District, and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma, State of California, alumni and instructional assistant, community day school division.
Second.
All right, so this also was an additional two hours that Dave Rose found the funds for this year to increase. It's actually vacant right now because the person who had. It's actually vacant right now, because the person who had the two-hour job took on a full-time, the full-time job at that school, so nobody is losing employment. Somebody left, and they'd actually created the two-hour position because they had the funds. And when they interviewed for the full-time job, they, they wanted to hang on to this other person who now has a full-time job, but they don't have the funds for that two-hour slot anymore.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item four, resolution 131425, of the Board of Education, Pedaluma City Elementary School District, and the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District, of the County of Sonoma, State of California, eliminating instructional assistant categorical position.
So this is actually-
You said, oh. Ow. Sherry's leg.
You know, I shouldn't wait until you tell me to speak. I-
You better. There's a choice.
So this position, although it's called an instructional assistant, is actually, is the library coordinator, Abby Kinley, who's retiring at the end of the year. There's the four hours that goes through the partial tax. But Kinley has paid an extra two hours. They have decided that that money could be better spent in another way. And with the person retiring, they're going to cut it back to the four hours that the partial tax supports. I don't actually know how they've decided to spend that money, but because it coincides with her retirement, they have decided to redirect those funds.
Any questions, discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So again, resolution number five, resolution 131426, of the Board of Education, Pedaluma City Elementary School District, and the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District, of the County of Sonoma, State of California, eliminating instructional assistant special education position.
Second.
So this position also, they had a greater need at Pedaluma Junior for instructional assistance, and so they added hours to that, hired an extra person talking to the director. They may need that next year, but they're not sure yet, so they need to cut, as was planned at the beginning of the year, and then look at what the needs are next year to see if they need to bring somebody back.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. Just the Williams-Sutton one, is there any discussion on that?
Actually, there's, there's no, there's no issues.
That was a clean one.
Yes.
Has he always been a Williams-Sutton guy, huh?
Yeah. He knew Mr. Williams.
Yes, yes. So they, yeah, they, they write, you know, they tell my department. My department tells me what to come up here and say.
We have no discussion?
No, no, there was nothing at all. No complaints.
Very good. Now, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
You could be next.
All right. Moving on to business services. Item number seven, purchase orders. We would need to authorize those, but the first one we asked, do I have any, I have seven, and while we're here, eight, under lists of expenditures, any conflicts of interest that would require somebody to excuse themselves in this room, out of seven or eight. Is she badly injured?
I've looked at her, I'm good.
Very good. Okay, so under item seven, purchase orders, resolution that we accept purchase orders.
Second.
Any discussion on purchase orders? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Purchase orders go as presented. And then the same resolution for item eight, list of expenditures, resolution to approve that. Oh, it's not actually a resolution, it's just a motion to-
Second.
Got a second over here, any discussion on expenditures? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? They're just trying not to spend so much money.
I'm working on it.
That's what I'm saying, because everybody's thinking. Item nine, agreement, authorization to enter in an agreement with the Stockdale Inspection Services, and this is for inspection services oriented to the Valley Vista School HVAC replacement project.
Second.
Yes, we're required to have an inspector or director to make sure that the installation is all good. So this is another part of that project.
And is this, yeah, is this, is this one system, or is this an entire wing of?
This is for the multipurpose room in at Valley Vista.
And we're getting rid of the radiant heat, or putting in-
Right, the radiant heat failure.
I remember, it didn't last thirty-five years ago, so.
Well, we're finally getting around to replacing it.
Okay, and then the question I had, and I feel like I'm channeling Mike here, and so catch me if I am, but there was like a maximum dollar amount that was huge.
You are channeling me.
I am channeling Mike. It was-
Fourteen thousand.
No, no, it was more than that.
This was the inspection.
This is just the inspection.
This is a maximum of fourteen thousand for him.
Because I calculated it out to something like two hundred hours.
I know.
If I just, I was doing the air math on it.
I know, I, I-
So that's not going to happen. Only two hundred hours' worth of inspection.
I would be shocked. So there is an hourly rate in there of eighty dollars, and that seemed reasonable. And the maximum is the fourteen thousand four hundred.
It was more than fourteen thousand four hundred, wasn't it?
It's fourteen thousand four hundred.
No, it was fourteen thousand four hundred.
Did I misread that? Well, it still seems like a lot.
It is a lot.
It is a lot.
It seemed like- Air count something else, but that's a lot of money.
You're probably running it over into campus.
Maybe that was a 1219.
But is that, have you worked with these people before?
Yeah, John Stockdale is, has been a DSA inspector on a number of projects for the district, and he will bill us for the actual hours.
We find it to be fair and reasonable?
Yes, yeah, very much so.
But that just seems, yeah, kind of agree with Troy, that seems like a lot for just inspection.
And that's-
He wants to put the whole new system in for that.
And of course, the other part of it is, he has to write all the reports for the Department of State Architect, and then get those signed off by the, by DSA for the project to be accepted.
So the bulk, I just guess I want to sort of go on the record, if you will, that the bulk of this money is being spent to cross a T and dot an I with the state that somebody installed an HVAC correctly, so-
According to the DSA-approved plans.
According to the DSA-approved plans, it probably took six months to get.
To, meant to get DSA approval on that.
Yes.
It's really expensive to build anything when you're a school district.
But the-
And it's very frustrating, so I just never miss an opportunity to say that part.
That's what I'll say, if it's up to us locally, it'd be a lot cheaper.
All those in favor of this expenditure?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I know the staff get tired of me saying that, I just, it's one of the few things I get to say.
Well, the people at home need to know.
Uh, let's see, this is an interesting one. Item ten, resolution 131427, of the Board of Education, of the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District, of the County of Sonoma, State of California, declaring an emergency pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 20113, the Casa Grande High School fire alarm system is broken.
So-
So I don't know.
Second.
Go ahead, thanks.
I, I didn't get my check straight. Yes, the fire alarm system at Casa Grande is in need of repair, and because of the urgent nature of it, we wanted to bypass certain bid requirements to allow us to address it in a more timely fashion.
So code allows us, when there's an emergency situation, to expedite the process by possibly not having to go out to bid, or going after-
Yeah, by not having to go out to bid, you know, take county approval, it takes unanimous approval of the board, and the county superintendent to sign off.
Okay. I don't remember in my tenure here that we've ever done that. Have we ever done that?
We have done it, but it's been a long time since we had an issue that needed to be addressed.
So clearly, this isn't something that we do often.
Not at all.
We would sidestep something by doing this.
Probably the second one that we've done since I've been here.
I think there's, might have been one since I-
In two thousand.
Two thousand.
Oh, okay, so there you have it.
And this has to be repaired as opposed to a complete.
It has to be related to a safety issue, or an emergency or safety issue. And this is a safety-
No, my question was like, are we repairing or replacing?
We're determining that. I, we believe that we have to replace it, but we have an electrical engineer that we're working with now to make that determination.
Got one right back there. Okay. They'll do fire alarms.
Should we do a demonstration of these protocols?
Yes.
So you need a, we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then Steve, I assume that we have one, was it?
Dr. Harrington, the county superintendent, has to be then approved.
Okay.
So it's submitted, and you may submit it again.
Okay. I can't imagine there's a problem there. Okay, item number eleven, agreement, ratification, E-rate award of the five-year agreement with AT&amp;T for managed wide-area network for laying out services expansion. I will take a motion.
Second.
Second.
This is major agency.
So this is part of the Phase A expansion of the bandwidth for the internet, and so this agreement is building that and allowing it so that in future years, or as needed, it can grow in capacity. And it's eratable, so it will be, we will receive E-rate credits for it.